All right, I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove, Village Board of Trustees, meeting to order on Monday, May 16th at 6:31 PM. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting. We have it here in Village Hall in person, as well as on Zoom for those that choose to use Zoom, or an audio call-in number and meeting ID at the top of the agenda, both of which, the link and the call-in number are there. We have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. If someone from the public does wish to speak, we ask that you share your name, your address, your municipality, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes. So I will pause. If anybody on the Zoom or in the room chooses to speak, just let us know. All right, moving on then to discuss and consider our meeting minutes from our regular Village Board meeting, held on May 2nd. Are there any comments, edits, or questions, or consideration for motion in the minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Thanks, Melissa. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you, Heidi. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Next up, we have unfinished business. First one is to discuss and consider granting easement on Clark Street for utilities and communication. There's an easement document in our packet. You want to handle this, JJ?
I'll be brief unless there's any questions. Essentially, we're going to bury the power along Clark Street for that project there, and it's tight right away, so Alliant needed an easement from us on the front edge of all the parkland there in which to put the power, and TDS is up on the poll there too, so they're going in as well. Stafford's real estate folks reviewed this and sent back a couple of little edits, and Alliant agreed, and this is it. So it's pretty straightforward unless there's any questions or concerns.
Any questions from Board members? No, we're looking forward to that street getting redone finally, and plenty of new parking. All right, so this is a discuss and consider. If there's no questions or concerns.
I'll move approval of the easement on Clark Street for utilities and communications, the easement as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Heidi. Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Moving right along to new business. We have a great group in here, I think, at least in the Village Hall. Starting off with swearing of officers Zenith Lee and Matthew Graham. Chief, I'm assuming you're going to do this?
No, actually, I would have put this.
Oh, that's right.
I'll stand there and walk through.
So if you could raise your right hand, and you can repeat after me. I, Zenith Lee.
I, Zenith Lee.
Who has been appointed to the office of full-time police officer.
Who has been appointed to be a full-time?
Police officer.
Police officer.
With the Village of Cottage Grove.
With the Village of Cottage Grove.
Swear that I will enforce state laws.
Swear that I will swear, enforce state laws.
And ordinances of the village.
And ordinances of the village.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Wisconsin.
And the state of Wisconsin.
I agree to faithfully discharge the duties.
I, I'm sorry.
I agree to faithfully discharge the duties.
I agree to faithfully discharge the duties.
Of said office to the best of my abilities.
Of said office to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Just need your signature here. See, now you got the easy one.
I'm Matthew Graham.
Who has been appointed to the office of full-time police officer.
Who has been appointed to the office as full-time police officer.
With the Village of Cottage Grove.
With the Village of Cottage Grove.
Swear that I will enforce the state laws.
Swear that I will enforce the state laws.
And ordinances of the village.
And ordinances of the village.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Wisconsin.
And the state of Wisconsin.
I agree to faithfully discharge the duties of the said office.
Cut that one half.
Sure. I agree to faithfully.
I agree to faithfully.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Just need you to sign here.
All right, we welcome Officer Lee and Officer Graham to the forest. That's wonderful. And thank them, other officers and their families, for being here this evening. If no Board member objects, since we're on emergency services-type activities, and the chief, fire chief is here, and if he's ready, we'll move his report up in the agenda in case you have to go off to the town yet tonight.
Staffing is still the same as it was last month. Thirty-eight members, eight officers, one driver, 25 firefighters, and four probationary members. We are currently at 87 calls for service on the year. That consists of 34 in the village, 25 in the town, 11 in Pleasant Springs, and 17 to other municipalities. No real updates on recruitment and retention. We didn't add anybody or lose anybody this last month. Training for April consisted of wildland burns, and we also did a training on turbo draft, which involves taking lake water from Lake Giganza and using it for fire attack. Our upcoming trainings this month will be the 17th, 24th, and 31st, which will be hot drills in the village, in the hydrogen areas. So we'll be out and about, actually doing fires, fire drills in the village. The final inspection of New Engine 3 was last week, May 10th. The truck was inspected and verified all items on the spec sheet were met. There were some defects that were documented and put on a punch list. Pierce is working on that punch list. I was told today that the truck will leave Pierce tomorrow morning and go to Reliant. They will have it for a few days for the tools, and we'll either have it towards the end of this week or early next week it'll be here. So he's going to give me the final update tomorrow when we drive the other truck up there to get the tools off of it and stuff. So I will let everyone know the firm date when it's coming. Other news, the department's going to have our 91st Annual Festival coming up in June. Starts June 16th and goes to the 19th. Details are on our website. We're finalizing our, and updating our diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. While doing this review, we've come to note that the department currently consists of 18% females, which exceeds the national average of 11% for volunteer, and 8% for career departments. In contrast, 20 years ago, the department only consisted of 3%, female membership. So continuing to try to grow that and other diversity on the department. We had a ton of people take classes this semester, as opposed to reading through all of them. I did copy that so everybody could read through that. And then our anniversaries for length of service. myself for 15 years, April Hammond for 21 years, Kevin Laufenberg for 15 years, and Lance Severson for 21 years' service.
Any questions for Chief Archibald?
I had one. Thank you for the report. I liked how it's getting more information, and so we're learning more, so I appreciate that. With the Fireman's Festival, I think is why we're starting to see the yard signs pop up that, like, that they support the Cottage Grove Fire Department. Is that for part of the Fireman's Festival?
Correct. I think that's based on donations. So Jason Kudina is the festival chairman. He handles all that. So it's, uh, once you get a certain amount of donation or whatever, they get the yard sign for it, I think. So.
Do you think that we could have one at Village Hall?
I will talk to them about getting you guys one.
Thank you.
We can arrange that.
Great.
So.
Thank you for coming tonight, too.
The only comment I have is, again, congratulations on all the service anniversaries, including you, Chief. Twenty-one years, a couple of folks there is incredible length of service to the village, and certainly very, village as well as the town, and very much appreciated. And then just a plug for this festival. I know there are volunteers needed, at least for Hot to Trot, for sure. I don't know, Chief, if you've got other spots that you guys need help with, but I'll put that plug out in the community right now for at least Hot to Trot, because I know I saw that message come through.
For this year with the fundraising from the festival, what was it that you're working towards fundraising for?
The department's looking to purchase new extrication equipment. We'll be looking to purchase all electric tools, which will go on Engine 4. The current set that's on Engine 4 will move to the squad, and we'll be getting rid of the smaller set that's on the squad.
Great.
And the association members did vote last month to already purchase that, so it, you know, they did already agree to buy that with the funds, so it is coming. It'll be here in, I think they said, eight weeks or so, so.
Great. So the more support we can get out there, and the more people coming out, the more donations, and the more we can rebuild the fund then, right?
Yep.
Great.
Any other questions or comments from Board members? Chief? All right. Thanks, Chief.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Moving back to new business. Item B, discuss and consider authorizing the legal team to work on responsible bidder ordinance update. In your packet, Melissa put together a memo, kind of outlining what this is regarding, but Melissa, I don't know if you want to kind of summarize that?
Sure. Thanks, John. So basically, the state statutes indicate that municipalities have to choose the lowest responsible bidder. So we all know what lowest means, but responsible is kind of up for your own definition, your own determination, and so that's what we need to define. Fortunately, Strand does a lot of it already in their process, in their application for us, which is great. However, we haven't incorporated them in our ordinances. So if we, something were to happen, and we didn't use Strand anymore, or they went to a different system, we wouldn't necessarily have the same information to determine what responsible is. So before we moved any further with this, we need to authorize our legal team to update the responsible bidder ordinances, as well as the right-of-way ordinances. As we all remember, in Sun Prairie, they had that explosion, which unfortunately caused a loss of life, because there, there was a subcontractor working who hadn't done the proper procedures, I think, or there was some miscommunication of some sort, and now Sun Prairie has a very extensive ordinance about it to prevent that from happening. And we don't necessarily need that much, but we should have our, our ordinances up to date on that as well, to help our staff to make sure that our village is protected as well.
Rick, anything from a legal perspective to add?
Not a whole lot. Basically, one of the reasons why I think this is a good idea is, like Melissa said, responsible isn't defined by the statutes. So if we create a policy that everybody knows, the village knows how to apply it, the people bidding on projects, they'll know it exists, it allows us to implement this in a more uniform manner, and that way, you're not making more arbitrary decisions. It's guiding your decision-making process. So having something like this in writing is actually, it could be beneficial. I don't think we've had these issues come up in the past, but it's always good to have something down, just in case you do have these questions to answer regarding if a bidder is responsible.
Any questions from Board members or comments? I think it's always good to have it documented. Even Strand's doing it now, as Melissa said, you know, who knows if someone, we get a different engineer or something like that. It's, it's clear, and it's always clear to anybody bidding on any work with the village that, here's our ordinance, you can read it. It's black and white. You don't have to ask questions, even down the road, when they have to ask questions of our village engineer. Heidi, you had a comment?
Sure. I just wanted to comment that we're not the first ones to walk down this path either. There are some other neighboring municipalities and some throughout the state that have already enacted something like this, so we're not the first. It's not, we're not the last either, but I think that it's a good time to think about this.
Well, one other thing, if I can. I want to thank Heidi, too, for working on this, like, in the past year or two as well. It's kind of been developed, and other municipalities have put it forward, too, so we can kind of go off of what they've done, and they've, they've found some things to fix in their ordinances, too, so hopefully, we, we won't be the first, and we hopefully get a better product that way, too. But thank you, Heidi, for bringing this forward earlier, too.
Rick, one other question. Any legal precedent as far as anything in the courts right now that we need to also consider?
Not really. I mean, the bidding laws, a lot of the court cases are from decades ago.
Okay.
Really, the thing is, we, the policy just needs to make sure that it's complying with state statute. So as long as we're not putting any provisions in there that are going to disincentivize competition, I guess, like, for instance, putting in something like they have to be a contractor based out of Cottage Grove or something, we can't do anything like that. But there are a lot of other things that we can implement to make sure we're still in compliance with state law, but also making sure we're getting good contractors for these projects.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions from Board members? Otherwise, this is discuss and consider.
Okay. Go ahead.
I move to authorize the legal team to work on the responsible bidder ordinance update.
And right away?
And right away.
Yep.
I'll second it.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Melissa. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Moving right to Village Boards, Commissions, and Committees, starting off with Public Works, Properties, and Sustainability. Heidi.
Sure, thanks. So this was the first meeting of Public Works, Properties, and Sustainability Committee, first joint meeting, and first thing we talked about was the stormwater project planning that we talked about a few meetings ago, with the coil, transitioning that to capture more total suspended solids to meet our MS4 requirements, work toward that. And we aren't going to get as much bang for a buck based on some additional engineering that has been run since the initial presentation. So Strand and the team there are going to continue to brainstorm, work on ways that we can meet that total suspended solids reduction, and keep us updated through the Public Works Committee, and then perhaps see something come through to the Board as a recommendation from Public Works. We also briefly touched on the village specifications and standard detail drawings, which are the requirements for developers on how they install everything as they build out developments. We also briefed the Public Works Committee on the sustainability initiatives that we've been working on. And then we also had the chance to meet Brian Peterson, the new Deputy Director of Public Works. So welcome him to the team. Was his official start day this week?
Yes, first day was today.
Oh, great. Oh, welcome to Brian. Want to pass that along to him?
Tonight, we'll let him get settled a little bit.
All right. Did I miss anything from Public Works?
Nope.
Or any questions? Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Heidi. Moving then on to Utility Commission.
Well, despite a few technical difficulties, we talked about the fourth quarter 2021 water rate adjustments. Discuss and considered population modeling for water and sewer master planning. We went with Strand's population estimates instead of the lower DOA estimates. Talked about the sanitary survey report, which showed no significant deficiencies. There were five issues that are going to be addressed throughout the rest of this year. Three separate recommendations made by the DNR, three non-conforming features, things that were approved when the things were built but are now on code that would need to be fixed if remodeling occurs, or if there's any health hazards identified. Overall, we have a good record of compliance with monitoring and reporting requirements. Engineers report, updates on Cottage Grove, Authentic, Weston Ridge, talked about upcoming utility projects. Water replacement, Caleb Street from Main Street to Forest, Clark and Grove to begin after the Fireman's Festival. And then the Director's Report from DDPW, talked about the, Brian Peterson, as well as. Rain barrels, and it had only two compost bins left by the end of the day, so that was a successful. Oh, JJ has anything else for that either? Perfect. Perfect. He said it.
So you go, perfect. Goes right downhill from there. It's just, can't go up. Nice job, Chris. Plan Commission. I'll take a shot, and then Heidi can jump in, too, as well, as Erin. Erin's around. I don't even know if she's around. It was a brief meeting for a change. We went through a concept presentation for a proposed, essentially dog care, dog daycare on Lot Number Two in Progress Drive, next to the kids' daycare there. It's an empty lot. I think it's actually got two temporary, small, little tiny houses on it right now. So Todd Ailish took us through that proposed plan, got some feedback from the Plan Commission, nothing negative, certainly. He's still working on the business plan and all the other things that he has to do before he takes the next step, and really coming through and actually presenting to the plan and working with Erin and staff. So that was it for the meeting. And I wish I could make something up. The technology actually worked better for that meeting, though, Chris, just so you know. So we got, yeah, whatever it was, we got fixed just a few hours later. Next up, we had Board of Review. Heidi, you want to take a stab at this one?
Sure, I'll make it pretty easy. We performed our statutory duties as required successfully. There were no petitioners for their property assessment this year, and we adjourned. I think that sums it up, unless anyone has.
No, look at this.
I have a question.
Sure.
Well, I think it goes along those lines. Are we doing an assessment, again, of, do we ever set that in stone as far as reassessing? I forget.
Excuse me. Not set in stone as far as any policy, but I think learning from last time, if we dip below 95% or above 105%, I think that's when we would seek to do a reassessment rather than statute requires that you do it within several years after falling either 10% below or 10% above. And we realize that by the time that you fall 10% below or 10% above, and if you are waiting an additional year or two, like, you could quickly be 15% to 20% out of whack, and we want to keep people's property values close enough to market. So long answer to say, no policy, but I think we're, we're okay yet, but we, we just monitor it every year.
I think the appraiser said we were 100% right now this last year, so.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Parks, Rec, and Forest Tree. Heidi, again.
Yep.
More to talk about this one.
So we do have a couple items here. We actually met two different times since our last meeting, because we wanted to get the Red Hawk Park Phase 2 included in bid release that is scheduled to go out tomorrow. So we have Backin Park Skate Park and Pump Track, and Community Park redevelopment on the slate for this summer, so those are scheduled to be released. We didn't have much of an update other than that, but then we talked about Red Hawk Park Phase 2, which we had originally planned for an inline skate rink. And then because of the circumstances of that park, it was recommended we reconsider that amenity, and maybe put it in a future park instead that has more parking and more space. So we looked at some different concepts, heard from some neighbors, had a number of requests for a zip line to be incorporated in that park, so we saw a few different design options, and the committee has recommended that we go with the zip line option, which maybe Sean's going to share or talk about. There were a couple concerns raised about adding a zip line to a small park at the end of a residential street that doesn't have a lot of parking, because at the beginning, when we added the zip line over here, there was, you know, it was exciting for people. They would drive over and park, so there were some neighbors on that were right across the street from Red Hawk Park. We talked about how, you know, that could be a possibility. Overall, I think the neighbors still were interested in the zip line, and that's what the committee's recommended, but we can talk about the options if you want. I don't know, Sean, you have something to add?
No, I think you, you hit it right on the head. We, we wanted to make sure that we talked to as many people as we could about the possibility of a zip line in that area, and I, you know, with us already having a zip line, maybe we don't have as much in that little park as what we saw when we put in our first zip line. So I'm comfortable with, with the new design, if you guys are okay with it.
So our, yeah, our design here, as you see, has six swings. It's three bays of swings. There'll be some accessible swings, and some poured in place to the access points, a small gazebo, and then, you know, you see the zip line that's placed away from the existing house that is adjacent to the park. And it is a discuss and consider for us tonight, so it can be released into the bids tomorrow. We're looking at, is it eight to 12 weeks for equipment?
Yes. We're looking at probably a September install at this point.
I'll move to approve the Red Hawk Park Phase 2. See, is that the, the, yeah. Is that all you need?
Maybe it's a staff report, perhaps?
Yes, as in the staff report.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Brittany, and thank you, Melissa. Any further discussion?
I have one question. How long is the zip line at Willow Run?
I'm sorry?
How long is the zip line?
How long is the zip line at Willow Run Park?
Seven, it's the same line, seventy-five. Yep. We're just getting a newer, updated version.
The board will go on a field trip and won't take a tryout, is that?
Absolutely. Let's save that for the skate park. I think that's where we ought to be.
Yeah. All kids at heart. All right. Any further discussion then? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next then, from Parks, we have discuss and consider Park Development Fund's monies to cover additional fifteen thousand needed for the irrigation project for Fireman's Park, the baseball diamond.
Yep. There's a memo in your packet. We did have this budgeted for this year, although as with many things, the costs have gone up. So Sean is proposing to utilize some of the Park Development Fund to cover the additional balance. We do have a healthy balance in the Park Development Fund currently, so looking for approval to go ahead and use those funds to get the irrigation going. I don't know, Sean, if you have anything to add?
Excuse me. Hit it right in the head. Costs are going up, but I feel if we wait, it's going to be even more. So I found somebody that can do it for that. Obviously, it's got to go to pit, but I found somebody that is willing to do it for that amount, so.
Sean, is there something that we can point to? Is it materials? It's labor?
It's materials.
Materials?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been, it's went up twenty percent since November and they expected another twenty percent coming in June or July.
Wow.
Yeah. Don't irrigate your house.
Oh, we don't want to irrigate the yard, maybe, but not the house.
Is that going to be done before the festival or would it be after?
It won't happen until fall.
Okay.
So we got to get through our entire summer season and then it'll be installed in the fall.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions from board members in this? Otherwise, any consideration for motion?
I'll move approval of the utilizing Park Development Fund to cover the additional fifteen thousand needed for the irrigation project at Fireman's Park as presented.
All right. Thank you, Heidi. Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. We, they were along to reports from village officers. Rick, anything?
One quick thing, maybe something that's only interesting to me and Larry. We actually wrote a blog post about this recent court decision involving the city of Brookfield, where essentially conditioned a land division was they had to connect two dead-end roads. And the Court of Appeals said that that was an unconstitutional exaction. So essentially, just something they have to be aware of. I don't think it's going to affect the village necessarily, but just we have to be aware of when we're conditioning approvals to have some sort of public improvement that's constructed along with it. We just have to make sure that the development creates the need for that public improvement. So here, the court said that the street basically wasn't, the connection between these two dead ends that they imposed as a condition did not relate to the actual land division and development. So they said it was unconstitutional. So sort of an interesting little case. Larry and I wrote a blog post about it on our website if you want to check it out, read more details. But that's all I got for you.
Is that because they were, the municipality was trying to make the developer connect it?
Correct.
So if the municipality wanted to connect them and paid for it?
They could have.
Okay.
Yeah. They had a long-term plan to connect these two roads and they just never did it. And then lo and behold, this developer comes in where they want to split a few parcels.
Oh, okay. All right. Interesting. Any else want to talk about legalese on that one? All right. Move on then. I just have a nomination for the Tourism Commission, so we get that spot filled.
I'll move to approve the nomination of John Williams to the Tourism Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. We already heard from Chief Archibald, so move right to approval of vouchers. Any questions or comments regarding the vouchers?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
All right. Thank you, Heidi. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Correspondence? I don't think I had any. Anybody else have anything? All right. Upcoming committee events. Got this little thing called Fireman's Fest, don't we, coming up?
Music in the Grove kicks off on May 26th at Bakken Park.
All right. Others?
The solar array at the Monona Grove High School, the Saturday at nine a.m., nine to noon. Open house, I think.
Wonderful. Any others that? All right. Future agenda items? Do you have anything that you can see? Maybe some Plan Commission items? No, we won't even have that, actually. We won't have a Plan Commission.
We'll have, I think we'll start the prioritization process and I think it's been a couple of years since reviewing mission vision values for the board, too, so maybe we'll incorporate that in in this year, too, at least have everyone have a chance to just take another look at it and see if anything wants, any edits are desired. And we also will likely have the first of two steps for the bond issuance for all the capital improvements this year.
All right.
That'll be our first meeting in June, but we do have our special meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. That'll be fun. The first one I've been on here. Are we going, should we have a discussion about what the village can do to celebrate our centennial or a hundred years in 2024?
That'll be here before you know it.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good idea. And is it something we want to kick into one or multiple committees to talk about first?
Oh, that's.
Maybe tourism's first to get it going.
Oh, sure. You just give it and you're all like, that's a good idea.
I don't want to make work for Ross, but since you and I are in the committee, no. But that might be a good spot to at least start because then it's certainly probably going to loop in other community organizations, the board, et cetera. But yeah, and we've got represented, representation on there from the chamber, too, so can get their wheels working on thinking about various things for that, too.
Great.
All right. Anything else? All right. Then we will move to go into closed session. And this is a closed session regarding Deer Grove EMS District and Joint Fire Agreements. The Village of Cottage Grove Village Board will enter a closed session pursuant on Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, parentheses, one, parentheses, deliberating or negotiating purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melissa. This is a roll call.
Ballwick?
Here.
Murphy? Peterson? Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Stoa?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
And Williams?
Aye. We're in closed session.